Very good. Let's call this meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Jake, roll call.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Right, is there a motion on this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Communications, Jake?
None for me.
Board?
No.
Nope, none?
All right, none for me. Public comments, this is the portion of the agenda the public can speak on items not listed. On this morning's agenda, the board can't act on those items. They could be topics for future meetings.
Sorry. It woke up.
That was very peaceful. I like that. They're calming. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda?
Yes. Mike Ridenhour.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't catch that. If you could identify yourself and let us know what your comment is.
Okay, my name is Mike Ridenhour. I would imagine most of you are aware of Charles Gleazy, Chuck Glezy's passing in the last week. He was my brother-in-law and I'm representing the family. And I would like to ask the Board of Supervisors for permission to establish a park bench in the courtyard of the courthouse to commemorate Chuck. The, what we're proposing is a bench like the ones that are currently in the, in the courtyard. We would like a plaque on them to just have Charles or Chuck's name on there. And a location that the, is approved by the, by the county. If the Board of Supervisors does approve our request, I would like to have the name of an individual or organization in the county that I need to talk to, to, to order and have the bench delivered and installed. This would be at no cost to the county. The, the family would pay for the bench installation and all costs associated.
But Mike, did this make?
Yes.
So, we could not, we could not make out much of what you said. There's just a lot of static coming through the line. But I want to, let me summarize what I think you said. You tell me yes or no if I, if I heard you correctly. And you're representing Chuck Gleazy and you're part of Chuck's family, is that correct?
That's correct, brother-in-law.
Okay, and, and again, our condolences on Chuck's passing. He sure did a lot for our community through, through his organization. And I think what you were commenting on is you would like the board to consider some type of memorial for Chuck on the courthouse grounds. Is that what I heard?
Yes, a, a bench just like the benches that are currently there. I, I'm not sure, can you hear me?
Okay, so, so what I heard was a bench of some sort on the courthouse grounds in memorial to Chuck.
Correct.
But thank you for that, Mike, and thanks for dialing in. Well, we've got that on our record now, so that'll become something we can put on a future agenda and consider that request.
And to reiterate, no cost to the county.
No cost.
No cost, no cost to the county. Yep, got that, Mike. Thank you for dialing in. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, any other public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? All right, very good. Jake, would you just make a note? That was Mike Ridenhour.
Ridenhour?
Ridenhour.
Yep.
For the family of Chuck Gleazy. Okay, thank you for that. Consent agenda, is there a motion this morning?
I make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Onto business. First, we have Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash seventy-eight, which is our second reading of the resolution declaring EMS an essential service. We have that, that we can put on the board. There we go, got it. Resolution's on the board. Everybody, I think, has staked out their positions. Jared, from a timeline standpoint, where are we at in the process now? I, I surprised him. He has to get the mic out.
This is the second vote on making EMS an essential service, the second of three. So the third, provided we move on forward from today, will be in two weeks. And at that time, if the, if the resolution passes, then the committee would be formed.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can I, so I need to apologize. Can you go back one step, Emily? This is on me, I think. Yeah, so this is just for the PowerPoint. It says first reading. I'm sorry, that's on me. I think-
Yeah, the agenda says second.
The agenda and the resolution says second. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's on me.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
I move we approve Resolution twenty, twenty-four day seventy-eight.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and support. Jake?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
No.
Next, we have Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash seventy-six, Junction ninety-two shop. We've got a couple of change orders. Next, a couple items.
Are these individual?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
So be the two different resolutions you want to stuff?
Yeah, so is it change order, which one do we have first? Change order one or two?
To deduct the rolling steel doors altogether and hardware, so it'd be.
Yeah, so change, so, so both change orders that are being presented are both deductions from the original awarded contract amount. After award of the project in December, we went with the architect and the contractor, we went through some value engineering proposals that they presented to us. And we, I think we looked at like fourteen and we accepted some of those value engineering proposals to try to reduce cost from the original amount to get it closer to our budgeted amount of five point six million from five point eight, which we're, we're closing in on that. So some of the changes are to interior door, interior overhead doors, I think as you mentioned, Keisha. Some ductwork changes for the office area that's included in the shop. And then the largest would be a code change in some of the building deflection limits, and then also overhead crane was removed from the garage side of the shop. We'll still have an overhead crane in the mechanics side of the shop.
Okay, very good.
So that's for both items.
Okay, well, we'll take them, we'll take them separately, Tyler, since they are listed separately. First one is a net decrease of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. And as Tyler described, it's a net savings at least on this portion of the project.
Yep.
So, or any questions for Tyler?
No.
Appreciate that.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-four seventy-six.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
All right, very good. Now we have Resolution twenty, twenty-four seventy-seven. Tyler, change order number two.
Yeah, so this is the larger of the two. This would be for the building code changes for the deflection limits of the structure and then also the overhead crane removal.
All right, very good. Board, any questions for Tyler? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-four seventy-seven.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
And just, just for the public, that'll be a savings or a change in that decrease of one hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars on that one. Tyler, thank you. All right. Next, we have a discussion item, the Pella Library. We talked about this in our last meeting. And I think this was a request for some additional funds coming from the county. And Keisha? We're going to go to the meeting and present your map to their board. How did that go?
Yeah, so I went to their meeting on August thirteenth and it was a very good meeting and I appreciate Mike. Mr. Darnity, Nargine, from the City Appella is here with us also this morning. He was at that meeting. He did a presentation. So if you're online or looking at it in the room with us, you're going to see first off, the City Appella and a presentation that they presented. And it's just a kind of showing some expenses and then goes on to what, what the cost of providing digital services are. If that's on the next slide there, you could. So this is for the total cost of forty thousand five hundred and fifteen. And then talks about what the rural Marion County residents are approximately using. Long and short, I know we have visited about this quite a bit, board. The library trustees come to, and if you would want to turn to page seven. Or whatever it is, I guess, yeah, that page seven. The library board had made their motion to do Marion County the financial request and which would be option number three. So that is why it's before us today. It's come back to us and whether we want to, if you see item number two, if Marion County desires to offer Hoopla access for rural residents, they would need to pay an additional eighty-four hundred. So currently, we've paid forty thousand. It would be an additional eighty-four hundred. They have given us some time to make that decision, but I am, on behalf of them, I told them that it would be at this meeting and that we would discuss. So then depending upon what we chose, that they could let the library rural patrons know by the first of September.
So, Keisha, the eighty-four hundred covers the cost for rural residents using those two services?
No, it would just be the additional cost of what Hoopla would cost. So the library continues to offer the bridges and canopy to rural residents. Hoopla is one of the, the e-services that, it's a nice surface, a service, but it's a higher platform. So it costs more. And so that's where they're coming back to us and saying, do we want to as a board pay additional eighty-four hundred dollars for the rural patrons? Now, I would also like to remind everybody, as far as I know, in the county, bridges is what every other library offers. So so that's what our rural citizens are used to is using for e-services is the bridges. I don't know about canopy on all, on all other rural library, or the libraries.
This is eighty-four hundred for the Hoopla service?
Yes.
For rural residents. Okay, got it. Discussion? Steve, anything?
Well, I guess, I guess my only concerns I would have is on all these premium services. I mean, when do we, when does it stop that we can stop offering premium services? I mean, obviously, bridges is, is a ebook service. My, that's my concerns. I mean, where, where does it end when we ask the taxpayers to pay more money for services they may or may not use on a premium service?
No, I agree with you. And I'll just come back to what I said in the last meeting. And Mike and I have had these discussions over the years. When, when do the rural residents get any credit for what they're doing in terms of the larger economic development projects? I mean, it's eighty-four hundred bucks. That seems like we're quibbling over nothing to me. Especially when the county, the rural, it's everybody in the county, but including the rural residents contributed nearly five million dollars to a major economic development project, so.
And this, and this slide up here is shows what I sent the library trustees and how I come up with my figures in the last meeting. And so if you want to kind of follow through that, I averaged, so the physical items borrowed is twenty-one, Hoopla is twenty-four, bridges is twenty-three. I didn't add, add in canopy because I wasn't, I didn't know that figure. And then the total average was twenty-three. So I went off the budget and followed what Mara had in her email and regarding library supplies. And you'll see that the, the budget is included in this documentation. And withdrew the building and maintenance reduction because that is also something she reduces. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't know, I mean, the brick and mortar of the building, the city provides anyways. So, and the maintenance, so that's why the twelve thousand dollars comes off. Anyways, long story short, the Pella Library funding for FY twenty-three twenty-four was forty-three thousand, but I show our expenses being forty thousand four thirty-seven. So, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars, we give them above and beyond. And then this year would be doing forty thousand and we would be providing five hundred and forty exceeds. So if that somewhat makes sense to you guys, if you can follow along.
Well, either current funding level, the bridges and canopy would still be provided, correct?
Correct.
Am I correct in that?
Yep. And I did ask them. I asked them to compromise the library. I said, why don't we just offer the bridges and canopy and not offer Hoopla? And that's, they, they did take option number three. But again, I can't make that decision. That had to come back to the board. And so we have to let them know where we're at on it.
Eighty-four hundred dollars to me is equivalent over nothing. I, I don't want our rural residents to not have access to things that everybody else has access to. And unless there's a way to come to some agreement that everybody gets full and equal access to all the services, give them the extra eighty-four hundred and next year you all, you all wrestle with that when they ask for more money.
I, I'm not there because I think that once we open up that door, then we're going to be providing, we're going to have to be providing it with the other libraries. I, I would prefer, and I asked them to come back with the matrix, looking at it for next year. So that's where I'm at.
Now, do, do you have a number? The zero twenty, your recommendation, what you're, what you're?
Well, the forty thousand right now is what we're offering. I asked them to come back with this, if we use the twenty percent or the total average and what we're looking at for expenses and they come back and say, okay, this is where we're coming with that number. Because right now, to me, we're covering Hoopla.
Well, did they, how did they respond to that?
They, they come back with, you can see the, the documentation that they have here.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having me here today. And as Supervisor Johnner says, the library board of trustees did discuss this at their last meeting. And please keep in mind, when we talk about the library board of trustees, they're responsible for the operation policy of the Pella Library and the operations of the Pella Library on it. So when they look at items and they look at cost access, the cost of items, one of their jobs is to manage their budgets. Digital access is an issue for libraries across the state of Iowa. Currently, it's at over twenty-five percent of the libraries, what I would call their supplies and services budget, that forty thousand. So it's escalated up greatly on the matter. Now, as far as the cost, I believe we showed it on a slide earlier. This would be what I would call the variable cost when you remove out the personnel and capital, as Supervisor Johnner had stated accurately is one way to look at it. Another item in city government is to look at the total cost of the library and allocate it based off the circulation over who uses the, the service. And I believe one of our first slides that we had in our, in our presentation showed the total cost of the library. Probably go to slide number two or one.
Yep.
Yep. Right there. If you were to look at the total circulation and allocate it based off a cost allocation over who uses it, we believe twenty-one percent of that total usage of the Pella Public Libraries attributed to rural Marion County residents. And that shows what the cost could be viewed as. Now, as far as the variable cost, I certainly understand variable cost and appreciate that, that thought, that is, that is a legitimate way of looking at items. One of the items that always you have to ask, anytime you ask about a variable cost, is how high is that percentage of what you consider a variable cost? Is twenty percent enough to impact things such as, it would be other variable costs, personnel, collection materials and so on. And we believe the answer to that question is yes. The second issue that the board faced in the variable cost is when you look at funding partners on it, offering the same services to one entity and at a different rate than another governmental entity at another rate on it as well. So they have to wear these things out. And I'm not here to say what's right or wrong on the viewpoints. They're both legitimate viewpoints to, to offer. And so that's why in looking at the matter, they decided to offer the county the option to provide Hoopla to rural residents if you choose to do so on, on it and for the additional eighty-four hundred dollars. And I, I hope that that makes sense. And I hope I answered your question.
No, it does. It does, Mike. Thank you. I, I guess a different, a different tact to this. And Jared, I'm going to ask you to maybe weigh in on this as, as well. Since even at the forty thousand dollar level, we're above our statutory requirement on what we provide to rural libraries. How can one of our own, how can one of the libraries in the system say if we meet our statutory obligation, well, we're not going to give the residents full service? How, how does that work when the statute says we only have to go up to even less than what we gave this round? So the statute sets that requirement. If we go above and beyond, that's merely gratis from the board based on discussions with the different rural entities or the different library entities. So I'm struggling a little bit, Mike, with how one library and maybe others can then say, well, we're going to pull services even though you met your statutory requirement.
That was a good question.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to try, try to answer that?
Well, I, I guess, you know, I'm throwing this question kind of at Jared Hold, but it would be something at least to think about. Because what we're really saying is that we can be held hostage to go above the statutory requirement. It's, it's limitless at that point. If you decide to add a whole bunch of services to the library that we don't approve and you say, but city residents get those and rural residents don't, unless legislature comes back and says, your statutory requirement is now a hundred thousand dollars a year. How, how do we work that out? Jared?
I took a look at this maybe a month ago when this issue arose. And that seems to be a question of first impression as far as law goes. It's not been litigated. It's not been interpreted as to what that code section says. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It just says county shall provide that amount and doesn't really go on any further. So there's no good answer to that. I know that's a very lawyer question, but it doesn't appear that that's been litigated yet. And I could do some more looking in to see if there's other support that might lean one way or the other, but that's where I landed so far.
Yeah, and Jared, I'm not, I'm thinking more from just statutory construction. I mean, I, certainly, we don't want to litigate a question like this. But from just a construction standpoint, if the legislature says you shall do X up to this amount and you meet that and exceed that amount, well, you could just go, you could just keep going. And, and I, I get, I am a little concerned about that piece of it, Mike, that, that future boards will be faced with this question. And it'll be kind of a loosey goosey idea of, of these different services. And I, unless the legislature would come back and address that specifically and say, hey, the costs of running a library have gone up. Counties and rural residents should pay more. We should raise that statutory requirement, the shall part to this.
And I did encourage them to, the, the library trustees to reach out to legislators and ask them, because this is a funding situation at the state. We are following what the state code tells us, but they need to speak to them about rising, raising this cost. Mike, I have one question for you. Hoopla is a platform, obviously, what we talked about. It's a higher level. Some larger cities would have this, but I mean, typically, that's not offered at all libraries. Is that correct?
That is correct.
To follow up on, on what Mark was saying, Mike, I'm curious. I, I don't understand the process all this went through, but if we were meeting our funding requirements and bridges and canopy were being paid for for rural residents through the county, why, why were, why were they going to be eliminated? We were already meeting that cost.
Love it. These are very good questions and I'll try to answer them. What we looked at and our legal counsel looked at, at this issue too and on it is as far as the funding level and you look at what would be called an enhanced service level versus basic service level. And I agree, Marion County is above their statutory levels for funding for libraries. And what the board looked at it and trying to differentiate between the service levels was, was the funding enough to provide enhanced service levels to rural county residents? And when we looked at the, the options that we actually presented for the board and put up there in the last slide, slide on it, what we specifically covered was the cost of Hoopla, the digital services, and they're reviewed as enhanced service levels. And the board views their purview on it is to differentiate between what would be called basic service levels versus enhanced service levels. Digital services, Hoopla, we believe because of the cost is an enhanced service level. And that's how they made their, their determination on what the compromise would be is to continue to offer digital services in the form of bridges and canopy.
Okay, Mike.
Enhanced level would have to be an additional compensation.
I understand what you're saying, but that was a compromise. Why was there even a compromise if we were already meeting those services? Paying for those services, why were they going to be eliminated to begin with?
Yeah, I think one of the, again, coming into this, this issue on it. And so if I don't state everything correctly, or if I, if something's been stated differently, this is just my observation on it. The reason they were looking at potentially eliminating those services is if you look at the chart that's on the screen, you look at the library's cost over the last four years, at their, they've gone up significantly for it. And I know at least from the City Appella standpoint, it has been a challenge to adequately fund the library, much the same issue the supervisors have faced. And so in looking at items and potential areas to save, I would say it's just not our library. It's libraries across the state of Iowa are evaluating digital access to residents, potentially curbing not only rural residents, those that offer it, but also citizens too as well. So this is a topic that it's my understanding that other libraries are looking at as well as the whole digital platform access and costs associated with it.
But if we're already paying for that service, we've already paid for it and you're going to eliminate it to make, to take that money and use someplace else? Do I hear that correctly?
Well, as far as the payment, I think that the key, key issue is from the board's standpoint, and this is my understanding again, is, is the payment adequate to continue to offer an enhanced level? And that's what the discussion centered on is when they, they met. So that's, that's what I'm here to report.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it, Mike. We're kind of putting you on the spot and to speak for the library board here. I did, somebody, Jason, did you have a comment?
I'll hold it for later.
Okay, okay. I just saw you, saw you back there. Yeah. Well, thank you, Mike. Board, any other questions for Mike? I guess I'll leave it up to the two of you, how you want to handle this, if you want to give it some time and think about it. I, I guess I'll kind of retract what I said earlier now that I'm thinking about the statutory side. I, I, I just see that being a slippery slope. That until that's clarified, I don't know how you can keep just giving more money to something that you've already met your statutory obligation. Somebody's got to clarify that question at least for me before I could give any more dollars to it.
Give any other thoughts?
Well, you know, I guess the compromise, I'm okay with that as long as, you know, we can still provide bridges and canopy to the rural resident. But I see, you know, I'm like Mark, I struggle with this enhanced services that we may or may not use and where does it end?
I mean, we have some unique relationships with Pella, Mike. Right? We have, we have the twenty-eighty that we have in place. Is that enhanced service? What Tyler does with the road department? About what Jason, I mean, we could go down this enhanced service thing where we sit down with a balance sheet and we'll say, we'll net it out at the end of the day, right? I, I I struggle a little bit with this one. I just do. So you want to give it some time to, you want to think about it, Steve?
I'm willing to make a motions.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really want to continue the bridges services that that they had that we're already paying for.
Okay, so you got a motion?
Yep.
Keisha?
Uh, my motion would be Marion County Board of Supervisors are opting out of paying an additional eighty-four hundred for the Hoopla service for the rural patrons from the City Appella. All other e-services, bridges and canopy and physical borrowed items will be offered. That is my motion.
And so that's for an additional amount of?
No.
No, no additional.
Nope, not opting out of paying any additional.
Okay, no additional people services?
Yep.
And no Hoopla? Steve?
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
I want to thank the library trustees again. I do hope that this allows you guys to be able to notify the rural patrons and please let them know that we are going to offer the other services. Okay, so there's less calling on both ends. So, okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Ramey, for joining.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, good discussion, folks. Next discussion in action, the Marion County IT GIS Director Position, Hiring Committee Recommendation. So who is speaking for the Hiring Committee?
I will speak. It's fine unless somebody else has, but yeah, I'm fine.
Keisha?
Yeah. Last Tuesday, we met and I want to thank the committee for meeting and doing the- Last, uh, Tuesday, we met and I want to thank the committee, um, for meeting, um, and doing the interviews. I want to thank all the candidates. Um, we appreciate their time and, uh, the time and dedication to coming and, uh, doing the interviews. Uh, the committee has a candidate they would like to recommend. And if the board is ready, I'm willing to, um, present that name and, um, a possible, uh, the salary in which the hiring committee, um, is recommending.
Yeah, please proceed.
It's Andrew Claseman. And we would like to offer him, the committee would like to offer him ninety thousand as the starting salary for the IT GIS Director Position.
What was his last name?
It's C.L.A.S.E.M.A.N.
Keisha, uh, was that unanimous for the committee?
We all come together, yep.
All right. Steve, any questions?
Was that a, a unanimous decision?
But it's a good question. I like that question.
I make a motion that we approve that.
Just accept the hiring committee's recommendation.
I would also like to direct that the, um, HR manager to be able to send an offer letter to Andrew for, for the ninety thousand starting salary, the IT GIS Director Position.
So we have a motion to accept the hiring committee recommendation, uh, hiring Andrew. And I'm not gonna get his last name. Keisha, last name is?
Uh, Clas, I believe it's Claseman. I don't want to ask him, yep.
For, uh, starting salary of ninety thousand dollars, we have a motion. Is there support?
I second.
Did you second? All right, Jake?
McCombs.
Aye.
Raimi.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
Very, very good. All right, updates. Steve?
Uh, I have none.
And I have none either. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no question to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Raimi.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.